And then I'm trying to just get my referral schedule so we can talk about urban camping. Okay, yeah, I'd like to put it in there. I'm trying to put it in the whole. Yeah, I don't know why they send us these. Yeah.
Just need to keep us on mind.
Good evening. I'll call the Missoula City Council meeting for May 22 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our first item is always is roll call and we have all members present either in the room or virtually with the exception of Mr. Contos who's absent tonight. We have minutes from May 15th, last week's meeting. Those have been adjusted by Ms. Raybine in response to some comment. Are there any changes to the minutes as adjusted by Ms. Raybine? Mr. Carlin, no?
Yeah, it sounds like we are going back and forth with some constituents who were attended that meeting that seem to think that there are some issues with the minutes. And I would appreciate if we could just maybe push this back a week to allow us time to, it seems like our clerks are working well on trying to help solve those issues.
Without objection, we'll approve those minutes next week. Okay, it's time now for public comment on non agenda items. Before we begin this section of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate that we have rules for how we, how these meetings proceed and we have rules around decorum. And those rules are designed to foster a productive environment and to ensure the integrity of actions before the council. Those, those rules are not designed to, contrary to some assertions last week, those rules are not designed to quash dissent, nor are they designed to prevent people from speaking on issues before the body or issues of concern. What we simply ask is that folks refrain from using loud, threatening or abusive language in order to maintain an environment where everyone feels comfortable to speak. And so with that, I, we welcome a diversity of opinions and I think that that has been demonstrated and we will continue to do that. Mr. Matier.
Travis Matier, Missoula resident. On Saturday, that's last Saturday at 5:30 PM, Glenn Harley Stevens died. He died on the sidewalk right across the street in front of the county commissioner's door. I went to Sam and Idaho today. I drove down there. Um, because that's where he's from. I implore this town to look at the death experiences of homeless people and at some point to put a price tag on it. I don't know what that would take. I'm going to investigate what it's going to take to, to put a price tag on Harley. I talked to Judge Jenks before she retired about him. Um, the price tag is at least six figures. A really nice private security guy wanted to buy Harley a hotel room. He didn't get a chance. He just wanted Harley to have a couple nights of peace. Harley would not have probably accepted housing. I can't speak for him, but he's a shelter resistant individual. And as for the rules, I implore you guys to enforce them consistently. Okay. Um, because I know you guys like democracy. I know you guys are working hard for this town and for the safety of everyone in it. Um, I don't feel safe. And my personal life is really, really difficult right now, but that's not your guys' responsibility. Your responsibility are for the people that are voting for you, even the houseless ones. Okay. Uh, and Harley was a member of this community. Even though he wasn't regarded necessarily well in Sam and Idaho where he stabbed someone and almost killed him, but you know, we all make mistakes. And I'm trying not to speak too loudly and I'm going to walk slowly out of here. So the adjective storming can't be applied to me. I'm going to walk really slowly, deliberately, maybe even reflectively. Um, I'm going to let you guys continue with your business. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Matier. Anyone else tonight? Come on up.
Uh, thank you. I know some of you have heard a lot.
I'm sorry, can we just get?
I'm Patrick Montgomery.
And can you, can you spell your last name for the?
M O N T G O M E R Y. And I have been a resident in the West Missoula neighborhood for 20 years. And I live in the condos one block away from the homeless shelter. And I'm, I'm here also to talk about public safety and that includes the homeless and includes the residents and includes everybody. And I would, I worked very closely, the mayor, the late Mayor Engen and the city council president Van Lozenberg, we, I, they were very generous with their time. We had a lot of meetings with them and tried to come up with a lot of ideas that would benefit our community. And unfortunately, not many of them worked. We did have a short-lived increase of the police patrolling in the area. And that did work as long as it was maintained, but of course there wasn't the personnel or funding to maintain it. Then about a year and a half ago, you, along with Mayor Engen, came up with a plan using, I believe, ARPA money, money to have a permanent presence in our neighborhood. And it literally changed our lives. The, the individuals patrolling got to know the neighborhood. Uh, we could show them the spots that were vulnerable and it except I think in one year I only made one, uh, had to make one 911 call. And I've, I've heard that it reduced calls a lot. Now unfortunately, that, uh, I, four or five months ago, that that type of patrolling stopped and my understanding is now it's more of an, and I might be wrong on this, it's more of a as needed basis and more the Pabarello area only. I called the patrolling company and they said they do not go to private areas. Now, I have also, I, I stay in close contact with the Pabarello and they told me very upfront. They benefited from this and the residents were happy with it and the residents felt safe. Uh, and I, I don't know if you leave the pub and go in the immediate air area, it's, it, as, as the previous speaker said, it's, it's frightening. And I, I hate to say it, but it's, it's, it's some of you who've got my panicked emails know it's gotten frightening. And what's even worse is when you listen to the police scanners, it's worse than you're reading on the news. And, um, so I would like to beg all of you, imagine you had a family member that you lived in that neighborhood, you would want them protected. And I know you all have good hearts and you have fabulous intentions. I just want you to know as a person who's been there for eight years, how well that worked and, and I've heard privately, the mayor, the late mayor was very happy with it. And I just urge all of us to, uh, find a way to fund this and get the community security back. It involves the residents and it is, I, I mean, I just have this terrible feeling if we don't do it with the situation, with the homeless situation getting worse. Uh, it's, we're probably see something even worse than what we've seen. So thank you for your time. If anybody in the press wants to interview me, I'd be very happy to talk. And I truly thank all of you because I know you've got a very difficult job and I know the time you put into it. So thank you.
And Mr. Montgomery, I'm aware of your emails to council and would be happy to, to have a meeting to discuss some.
I would love a meeting. I really appreciate that, Mayor.
Reach out and we'll get something set up.
I, I would love to, uh, as I was telling some people today, tour you through the area and show you the hotspots and, um.
I, I live a few blocks from you, so I'm well familiar, but.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Visit about it. So thank you for your time. Uh, anyone else tonight? Mr. Hunt? And we're, uh, our city clerk has asked for folks to start spelling their last name for the record, just for the ease of the minutes. Uh, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kevin Hunt. My last name is Hotel Uniform November Tango Hunt. I am a resident of Missoula. I sent a couple of emails to the council today. I really appreciate councillors Carlino and Sika reaching out today in an effort to make sure that the minutes of last week's meeting are reported accurately. I haven't seen any subsequent corrected minutes, um, uh, done by Ms. Raybine, but I'll take a look at them if they're around. But in my second email, which I'm sure you haven't even had a chance to read yet, because I didn't get it sent until 5:11 PM, uh, it's fairly short. It's just, you know, one page. And in that one, I summarize all of, of my proposed corrections and I note that uh, the uh, rendition of them that was sent to me by Mr. Carlino, as he uh, heard them, um, I found, I found with regard to Mr. Materials first, uh, said as a comment was just spot on. Um, and with respect to some errors that occurred, I think due to acoustics last time, um, I've made the corrections. Um, I want to point something out though, um, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council. It's fine to have all the rules you want. And it's fine to say, we're not doing it to suppress dissent. I, that's great. You know, you can, you can say that. The, the point is that here's where I'm going to differ with my friend, whom I don't always agree with. Um, Mr. Matier, I'm not here to ask you to enforce rules consistently because you have rules you shouldn't be enforcing at all. Uh, you can say whatever you want and we all like a nice atmosphere, but you cannot prohibit co- speech based on content. The statements by Mr. Matier, for which he was interrupted and pointed ordered last week were not loud, they were not abusive, they were not threatening. They didn't meet any of the criteria that you just recited, Mr. Mayor. None. And yet he was, he was shut down. That's why sitting right here, I said, you're violating his constitutional rights. Whereupon one of the council, councillors claimed I was shouting apparently. Uh, and that, then we had a recess and all of that. So this, this just can't continue. So you know, I urge people to educate yourselves a little bit about what is and isn't allowed to be said in a public forum, especially one that is provided by a governing body. I mean, I can't give legal advice to you. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be legal for me to do that. But I can express my opinion based upon my constitutional law experience as to what I think the propriety is of what's happening here. And I think it stinks. Um, I don't necessarily like the demeanor, the content. Um, or the manner in which certain statements, uh, by people are made in council meetings, but you know what? That goes with the job. Harry Truman said, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. Now, there's some people in kitchens I know now they're getting, they're feeling that and they're feeling that heat and they're ready to generate a lot more. And I just hope that, um, we can have a little rationality here because a Missoula that doesn't, you know, that tries to legislate etiquette and politeness and not offending anyone isn't, isn't the Missoula that I recall as having robust debate on all issues that affect the citizens of Missoula. So please don't enforce these, these, some of these particular roles consistently, at least not if you're going to do so in a non constitutional manner, even if some of them are facially constitutional. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Linda Wolf, W O L F E. Um, I sent you guys, if this isn't really why I'm talking to you tonight, but I did send you guys all a testimony of what my, um, my husband and I and my son went through with his cannabis induced psychosis last year. I gave each one of you guys a letter and Josh Latnick has, he's connected me up with the Missoula City County Substance Abuse Coalition. So I've been working with them on a lot of different things. But the reason, so the reason I'm here is to kind of tell you, the reason I said that first is to kind of tell you that I'm, I'm not a homeless hater. I understand mental health issues and what happens and where they go and how sad it is. And it's, it's a problem and it's huge and it's complicated and I know it is. And I feel, I really feel for the, for the people that are homeless and they can't afford the housing here. It's, I understand. I'm also a landlord of, um, five rentals and we have a house that we have to pay property taxes on. My husband would probably kill me if he knew that I was telling you guys what we paid for property taxes last year. But it was just under $18,000 for our property taxes, just our property taxes, just shy of $18,000. Um, we have a motor home that's parked in front of one of our rentals that a single woman lives at, lives at, that we just fixed it up and she's living there now. This motor home was parked in the quarter of Addison and Russell for months. The police knew all about it. They, we've had several conversations over it. For some reason, the people moved it to a little piece of property, a little piece of land. And that's how they got it to get towed because of the Department of Transportation then stepped in and said they have to tow it, or that's what I've heard. That's what I understand. I don't know for sure. That's what I've heard. So they tow it and I see, I'm like, yay, they towed it. And then, um, I go down the street to my rental and they towed it around the corner and parked it right in front of my rental. So it was down the street. They just pulled it. And then they parked it right in front of the rental of the single woman that lives in my rental. And my husband was just like, what is going on? It, it's really, it's hard, you know, it's really hard. Um, I feel like I want to, um, keep calling the police, but that isn't going to do any good. We've talked to him several times. And really it's about the lawsuit that could potentially happen is what I understand. There's potential lawsuits if people get, my husband is an attorney and he did kind of explain it to me and he does understand. We do understand that lawsuits are something that we don't want. None of us want to pay for a lawsuit. But there's, there's just got to be a way for these, these places, these, these motor homes, these broken down cars. There's also a broken down car. And in front of the motor home, by the way, there was a vacuum cleaner, chairs, a garbage bag, a garbage, a garbage can, a baby seat. Um, just garbage uh, along, on the side. The windows have like flock, you know, the kind of flocking that you use on Christmas trees sprayed all over their windows. There's been, um, arrests made out of that motor home for drugs. And the police say they can address the, the crime, but they can't make them leave. They can't pull the motor home away. It's just like a moot point. There's no point. And so that's kind of hard to accept. But, um, I just really hope that you guys can come up with something like a place for these places to get people to go, um, something. And I, I was called out. I'm also a bail bond, I have a bail bonds company. And I was called out the other night to go pick somebody up. It was not a bad, it was just a friend downtown and, um, walked, drove by 11 o'clock at night, Thursday night, I think. Drove past the pub and there were two police cars, an ambulance, people mulling all around. Um, tents, you know, all over the place, broken down cars, motor homes. It was just, it looked like a war zone. It was scary. And then I got downtown and I went down to the place where they were. It was like, um, on East Broadway. I parked on the side of East Broadway. I go down to the place they were and there's a homeless man sitting on the sidewalk, asked me for money. And I gave him, I gave him some money. And, um, and I said, where are you from? Where are your people? You know, are you, are you from here? And he said, no, he was from Virginia. And then I said, well, why are you here? You know, why don't you want to be around your family? You look like you're, you could use some help. He goes, no, I like it here. I don't need, I'm fine. I'm fine. There's nothing wrong. I said, well, you don't look like it. I mean, you, you're sitting on a sidewalk. You probably aren't doing the, this isn't the best life you could be living. You want some help? Some services or something? No, no. It's just, and the police have also told me, I talk to him quite often, that they will arrest transit sometimes and take things out of their pockets. And there's tickets that they've gotten from other towns and cities in Montana to Missoula.
So, so Ms. Wolf, I'm, uh, lenient on our time limit tonight, but we need you to.
That was it. That's all I have to say.
And I appreciate your comment and we can, um, we can follow up with the specific incident that you mentioned that, um, that, uh, we'll be in touch with a, a form that you can, uh, provide more information on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight? Mr. Moore?
Uh, Bob Moore, M O O R E. My favorite subject tip. Here's an article in the paper that I referred to before, Inflation Hurting City Staffing. That's a minor, minor problem. What is hurting is the spending authorized by this city council and MRA. I received a letter from Salvation Army here in Missoula. I'm sure you'll obviously see the same letter. It's so sad to read this. It's just, you, you got to get it and read. You'll see what is happening to your city. If you actually care. In this article, what is tax increment financing? In accordance with Montana state law, when blighted conditions are identified, an urban renewal district is created. I've asked you twice now to fix the blight that's in the sidewalks near my house and it still hasn't been done. I'm, I'm sure as you plan to, you just haven't gotten around to fixing that blight. I don't know if you have to actually create an urban renewal district for these sidewalks. But they really need to be fixed. I actually failed in snow. Uh, the year before that's I think it was. The MRA uses tax increment financing to foster improvements in the area through public slash private uh, partnerships or direct public improvement projects. Does that mean that you can, anybody that's got some influence can say, well, I'm going to put in a wider sidewalk. And I'm going to call it public improvement. Now, all these people that's brought up these problems about homeless and all those things, we can't let them get in the way of giving people like the owner of our famous shopping center 10, 20 million dollars. Or Stockman Bank, a few million dollars. Or uh, hotels, a few million dollars. Or Starbucks, a few thousand dollars. And own and own and own and own is give, give, give. And I'm entitled to it because you gave it to so and so in his hotel. So give me mine in my hotel. It is, it is sad what you're doing, wasting all this money and giving it to very, very wealthy people and and the facts are, you shouldn't be giving it regardless how poor or rich they were. My recommendation is that the MRA and all functions of the MRA be terminated and start running a city like it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other general public comment tonight? Uh, seeing none, uh, in the room and none online, uh, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks, Mayor Haas. Also second here, the committee schedule. So folks, tonight we are scheduling committee meetings for the next two weeks. Because next week is Memorial Day weekend. Thank you to all of those who have sacrificed on behalf of our, our freedoms here in the United States. Um, city council will not be meeting next week, Monday. And so we scheduled committee meetings for, uh, two Wednesdays. But really, we're only scheduling it for one because all the meetings are getting stacked on Wednesday, the 24th of May. Housing redevelopment, I think I'm showing on my screen, yes? Uh, so housing redevelopment and community programs committee, uh, will meet this coming Wednesday, the 24th of May from 10 AM to 11 AM. They'll be taking up a place to call home implementation update. Um, and the public safety, health and operations committee will follow from 11:15 to 12:20. They'll be taking up two items. One is an ordinance amending laws related to multiple dog permits. And the other is a municipal court programming update from, uh, municipal court justices. Uh, climate conservation and parks committee will follow from 1:20 to 3:20. They will be, uh, taking up a climate action update and they'll be taking up an emergency ordinance mending Missoula municipal code, chapter 12, point 40, regarding overnight camping and city public spaces. They'll also be taking up a regular ordinance on the same subject, um, and ordinance amending uh, municipal code regarding overnight camping and city public spaces. The public works mobility committee will meet this coming Wednesday from 3:35 to 4:20. They'll be taking up our professional services agreement with Morrison Merrily for the East, East Street Water System Improvement Project. They'll also be taking up a resolution establishing the Mullin Road Quarter sewer project fee. And once again, no committees next week, Wednesday, May 31st. Have a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Are there any changes to that committee schedule? Seeing none, that will stand as published and we can move on to our consent agenda. Excuse me, our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were generally approved unanimously in city council committee meetings and we save a little time on Monday nights by taking those items up as a package. Uh, there's, Ms. Raybine will read the list aloud and then we'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Okay, let me share my screen again here. Uh, so tonight's consent agenda has four items. The first item is to pay the city's bills and approve accounts payable in the amount of $1,102,905.45 for checks that are dated tomorrow, May 23rd of 2023. Number two is to direct the administration to repair additional policy, community engagement and regulations for, for private and shared micro mobility. Number three is to adopt a resolution creating a city policy of annually recognizing Juneteenth National Freedom Day as a celebrated city legal holiday to commemorate African and Black American emancipation from enslavement and to celebrate the freedom won by the people. Number four is to direct the city's code reform consultant team and the city administration to explore alternatives to the current minimum parking requirements and include elements of parking reform in the menu of the first early, early deliverable items for council to consider adopting to support a diversity, I'm sorry, to support a diversity of housing types and flexibility in project development through the code reform process.
Great. Um, is there any, are there any questions on the, on the consent agenda? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room and none online, any discussion from council? Yeah, we can have a roll call, but please, Ms. Raybine?
Okay, on the consent agenda, Anderson. Anderson?
Ms. Anderson is absent and I missed, I missed that in the roll call. I apologize.
Okay, I'll look that right now. All right, there we go. All right. On the consent agenda, Visera?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
In West?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and 2 absents.
Yeah, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, we have no comment from city staff or other city entities tonight. We do have a special presentation in the form of a proclamation. And this is a proclamation. And this is a proclamation dear to me, and I want to thank the sponsors of that for being here tonight. Whereas firearms are the leading cause of death for American children and teens ages 19 or under. And it is, it is estimated there are more than 1,100 suicides on college campuses in the United States every year. And whereas gun violence kills 120 Americans every day. Seventy women are shot to death by intimate partners in an average month. And in Montana, 228 die and 259 are wounded by guns in an average year. With Montana ranked at ninth in the nation for all gun deaths and third in the nation for the most gun suicides per capita. And whereas Montana has been in the top five states for the highest rates of suicide for the last 40 years. And 62% of firearm deaths in the United States are suicides. With suicide being the number one preventable death for 10 to 14 year olds. And LGBTQ youth being four times more likely to attempt suicide as their straight peers. And whereas support for the Second Amendment goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people and protecting public safety. And whereas June 2nd, 2023 would have been the 26th birthday for Hadia Pendleton. A teenage girl who was shot and killed in a neighborhood park. And we honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence on this day. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on Friday, June 2nd, 2023. To help raise awareness about gun violence, encourage responsible gun ownership and storage. To keep our children safe and to do all we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. Now, therefore, we, the Missoula County Board of, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. And the City of Missoula and the State of Montana do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2023. As National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we have a number of folks in the audience here tonight. I believe Ms. Weikl has some remarks on the proclamation. Thank you all for being here.
Hello. My name is Roxanne Weikl, W E I K E L. Longtime Missoula resident and a member of Ward Four. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to our community in all areas and all the work that you do. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. This is a grassroots, nonpartisan organization that was started by one mom, Shannon Watts. After the Sandy Hook shootings years ago. There are now 10 million supporters nationwide, 8,000 supporters in Montana. And 2,600 here in Missoula. So I want to thank you for proclaiming Friday, June 2nd. As National Gun Violence Awareness Day. It was started, as was mentioned, when Hadia Pendleton, a high school student from Chicago. Marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade. And then one week later, she was shot and killed on a playground in Chicago. Her childhood friends began wearing orange on her birthday, June 2nd. To commemorate her life and the movement has now spread to a national movement to honor survivors and victims. And for communities like ours to stand together with everyone who believes we can and must solve. Solve the gun violence problem in America. By now, many of us, in fact, I might even surmise, most of us have been impacted by gun violence. You may know one of the 228 Montanans who die on average every year. Or the many more who are wounded by guns or their families or friends who grieve. And we're all aware of the horror of mass shootings. And the fear when a Missoula neighborhood or a school like Hellgate is put on lockdown. And our students regularly have lockdown drills, which is an ongoing reminder of the potential risk present in our communities. I won't quote you all the statistics you heard in the proclamation. But I ask you, does it feel like the problem is getting worse? And the correct answer is, well, it is. Just in the last year, gun deaths are now the leading cause of death for American children and teens under the age of 19. Think about this for a minute. And in Montana, the rate of gun deaths increased 51% over the last 10 years. And that's compared to 39% nationwide. And the rate of gun suicides increased 43% compared to 19% nationwide. And it was mentioned, we are now number three in the nation for suicide by gun per capita. So we, along with a few of the 2,600 Missoula supporters. Are here tonight to to thank you for increasing awareness and providing this proclamation. We want to let you know that in Missoula, more than 25 businesses are providing information about National Gun Violence Awareness Day. In their stores in the next coming week. And we have a special thanks to Rockin' Rudy's, who always donates free ad space. For to promote national gun violence awareness and to Big Dipper for making a very special orange ice cream. So we invite you to join us Friday, June 2nd at 5:30 P. M. At the Courthouse Lawn. For a community gathering to honor victims and survivors and to take action to prevent gun deaths. There will be some speakers followed by a walk to the Bearcats Bridge. Finally, I can't close without reminding you. If you're a gun owner, please be sure to always store your guns unloaded, locked up. And with ammunition stored separately. And when your children are going to a friend or grandparents' house, ask to be sure their guns are safely stored. Why? I think you all know, this will reduce the risk of a child unintentionally shooting themselves or others. It reduces the risk of suicide. And 76% of school shooters state they get their gun from family or friends. So you can see that one of our main initiatives is safe storage of guns. So thank you again for the proclamation, for your time and your interest. And we hope to see you Friday, June 2nd at 5:30 on the Courthouse Lawn. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weikl. We have one item tonight for final consideration. This is the 3,800 Lincoln Road Family Transfer. We heard this as a public hearing last week and in the Landee's and Planning Committee this last week as well. And so our standard practice for these final consideration items is to inquire of the staff. If there's any information that has changed or any new information to present. Mr. Pard.
Yeah, I'm Cassie Trupar, Planning Supervisor. New information includes memo number two, which was released last week. This memo kept all of the amended conditions and findings of fact from memo number one. But also added a new condition of approval per the request at L U P. To require an S I D waiver on the amended plat.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Nugent. Let's entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move council approve the entitlement request for a family transfer subdivision exemption at 3,800 Lincoln Road in the Rattlesnake Neighborhood. In accordance with M C A 76 dash three dash 2071 B. For divisions made outside of a platted subdivision in Missoula City Subdivision Regulations, Article Eight, Section 8031B. Based on the materials submitted in the application packet and subject to four conditions of approval as amended by memo number one. Dated May 11, 2023. And with one additional condition of approval noted in memo number two dated May 18, 2023.
Thank you, that motion is in order. Is there public comment on the proposed motion? Seeing none in the room. As well as none online. Any discussion from council? I'm sorry.
Mr. Christian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Christian, do.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the second memo. We had some conversation in front of L U P and I'd like to thank staff and all those who participated in that process. I think from my perspective, the one thing that I would like the council to acknowledge, and I believe that they have, is that. My brother is not a developer. He would probably be more apt to be entitled or titled a landowner and a father. Who has had 22 acres in the Rattlesnake for close to 30 years and has built one home. He's trying to give one home to his daughter. And would like to to do that in a, in an affordable manner. And I think staff and the council have have attempted to. Meet that request and the spirit of the law that that it's founded under. The one thing I just wanted to put on record is while the second memo has asked for a waiver of a right to protest. The creation of an of an R S I D if one is so desired in the future. It is not a waiver of of any of the rights to protest the allocation of those costs to any individual neighbors. Or to talk about the burden or benefits of those particular infrastructure improvements on. My client's individual property rights. And if that's the case, we would not have an objection to that request. But I do think it's important to note that it still needs to be proportionate to the burden placed on public infrastructure. And it needs to be proportionate to the benefit that this property would enjoy from such improvements. In in relationship to the community benefit and the benefit of the neighboring subdivisions, which might also enjoy those. Those infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Any, any council discussion, Ms. Jones?
I will just comment that that is also my understanding. And that during our L U P meeting, we had the city attorney provided comment regarding that. And I think you have captured the essence of it, Mr. Christian. So I just wanted to put that on the record. That's also my understanding, the way you characterized it.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that we're going to work through this tonight and it doesn't sound like there's any objections. But I do want to note the same comment that I made in Landee's Planning. I voted against the extra condition being added. And I have concerns about placing a condition on a family transfer when the state legislature has. Taken that ability away from us. It just doesn't start until October 1st. So I just think that we need to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Vissera.
Thank you, yes, I just want to point out that the intent of the the waiver to protest that S I D is is. In case there is a need for a community connection in the area. It it's by no means trying to place unnecessary burden on this one particular piece of property. But rather ensure that at the time, if needed, for the for the benefit of the community or that neighborhood in particular. That we can have a mechanism to ensure participation from all property owners. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Vissera. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have, we had a public hearing last week. We had a robust discussion in committee. And we have a motion on the floor and we can have a roll call vote on that. Ms. Raybine.
Okay, on the family transfer, Carlina.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
And Vissera.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? Is 10 eyes and two absent.
And the motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight, nor do we have any committee reports or items of new business. And on communications from the mayor. I would just like to reiterate, and I apologize, I'm trying to find a document here. If you could bear with me just a moment. It was, it was related to that, but I think I'll, I'll just wing it here. I wanted to address urban camping briefly and as. And I want to start by saying that we appreciate the the comments and the feedback that's coming in from members of the public. And I think everyone around the table is very aware of of the issues that we that we're facing in our community. We have, I think, an obligation and a desire to have a compassionate response to those experiencing homelessness in our community. And we also want to ensure the the health and safety and welfare and and general order of our community is maintained. We are in a position where we're. One city in a state, in a region, in a country that is that is experiencing this issue at varying levels. You don't have to look very far to find other cities that have very similar issues. That are seemingly intractable in those communities as well. I know this is a problem in Kalispell, it's a problem in Helena, it's a problem in Bozeman. It's even, I'm surprised to learn, a problem in Great Falls. That's not, that's not something they typically experience. But in in visiting with their mayor last week, it's a problem there too. It's a problem with with a multitude of of causes and a a lack of simple solutions. And it's a problem that's very expensive and challenging to address. So what I would say is that we we have. We're bound by two Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decisions that that limit our ability to respond to urban camping and with an enforcement lens. And so we have to very carefully thread the needle of of enforcing criminal behavior and not not. Criminalizing the act of being homeless. Frankly, our community needs way, way, way more monetary resources to adequately address this problem. This is, this is a problem that is going to be highly visible this summer. It's a problem that we are going to have to do our best to triage. And it's a problem that we're going to need some public. Understanding that that we have very limited tools and very limited funding. We, that doesn't mean that we don't try, that doesn't mean that we won't keep trying. I will just say anecdotally, our Parks Department has on numerous occasions sent out crews of of 20 to 30 people. Cleaning up encampments in parks. We have, just by one example, that was done on a Wednesday. The next day, there were seven tents. The next day, there were 17 tents. And this happens over and over and over again. The answer, in my opinion, is sheltering. We need to provide places for people to be. We need to provide mental health support. We need to provide services that that. Have better outcomes than just simply trying to move someone along. But that's something that we lack budget to do right now. So we'll do what we always do, which is we're going to keep trying and we're going to keep innovating and we're going to keep collaborating. But we appreciate the public's patience as as that is a very visible acute situation this year. On the city website, there is a link in two places for city response to urban camping. And both of those have links to forms that we encourage residents to fill out. Those forms go to our code compliance office, they go to our police department, they go to our Parks Department. When relevant, they go to our Streets Department and our wastewater department. All of these departments are coordinating camp cleanup and and also. We are in close coordination with the Fire Department and the Mobile Support Team. And with our private providers on providing the compassionate side of this response. And filling out that form is the best way to inform the city of any issues that you might encounter in a park or in a right of way. So we encourage, we encourage folks to utilize those links and to. Keep in touch with anything as it as it evolves and also understand that we're working mightily with staff who were paid to mow lawns and. Maintain parks and maintain our wastewater system and our streets. Doing work that is outside of what we have historically asked them to do. So we'll, we'll keep, and this is something that we'll keep talking about and we'll keep updating folks on. But I just wanted to respond to those comments tonight. And for general comments, we can start over with Mr. Nugent tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments. I would just add that this is an emergency and it's an emergency in our town, in our state. And frankly, in the country. And I think the the sooner that we can start discussing it in those terms, the better we are. I think we're going to take steps on Wednesday to to do that. And maybe there are more we can do. But whenever there's a situation across the country where there are. Multiple people in multiple cities who are living in tents or living on sidewalks or sleeping in vestibules. That is an emergency and. The the number of people reaching out to us who who don't normally communicate with council has been very telling that. This is impacting people in different ways. And I just want to stress that I think everybody around this horseshoe takes very seriously those comments that we're receiving. And we want there to be more solutions and we're always open to ideas. And I know that that every town is struggling with this in different ways. And I can tell you personally, you know, I I run a business that that has a few locations around town and. One of our, in our downtown location, there's the same individuals sleeping in our vest. And one of our in our downtown location, there is the same individuals sleeping in our vestibule every morning. And every morning, the first staff member that arrives kind of makes some noise, and that person gets up and leaves because they don't want to. They don't want an incident. They were just trying to get out of the the wind or the rain or the weather or whatever the case may be. And, you know, I think that repeats itself all over town. And I don't think that that person chose this. I don't think that they were bussed here from anywhere else. I think that we are in a crisis. And so I appreciate taking the steps to to address it as we are. But I do think that we need to treat this as an emergency because it is one. Thank you. Ms. Savage.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. Yeah, I just mostly wanted to say that I have read all of the emails that are coming in from concerned residents. I do hear you. We do understand that this is a big issue. And thank you for continuing to get in touch and in Ward 1 and otherwise. I just wanted to to just say that I do I do hear the constituents that are reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlino.
Yeah, I guess I'll piggyback off of that. Yeah, I think, you know, we we had a vote around this table to close the authorized campsite. We had a, you know, vote around this table to not pass budget amendments to fund shelters. We had votes around this table to not fund the mobile support team. The council is definitely partially responsible for the homelessness issue, homelessness crisis around Missoula right now. And we should take this on with empathy and with solutions that can help solve this upstream, not spending millions of dollars responding to this issue. And the city ordinance that the city is bringing up to try and make it to where we can move people from parkland without providing anywhere for them to go that we're seeing on Wednesday is absolutely the wrong direction. And I also submitted a referral for Wednesday for us to have a council discussion about urban camping solutions. Just because since the Johnson Street Shelter and authorized campsites have closed, we've seen an increase in urban camping, which is causing safety issues to the people who are camping and safety issues to the community. And I would appreciate it if we could get my referral onto the schedule and not have to have other council members blocking other council members from having referrals about these important topics in town. So I'd really appreciate it if the council president did not block referrals and allowed every council member to use their right to bring a referral forward and try to have polished discussions. But ultimately, I'm just very disappointed in the city right now and disappointed in in not even allowing us to have a discussion about urban camping in the public realm.
Ms. Basika.
Thank you. I only had one thing that I was going to say tonight, but apparently I am going to say a bit more. First of all, I with the form for code compliance, there's also a phone number that you can call if you see urban camping or anything like that that you feel is unsanitary or anything that you're frustrated with. Then the code compliance officer phone number is 552-6630. So instead of going on the internet, you can also call them with that. And then to switch pieces a little bit, I with the gun safety proclamation tonight, I did want to thank everybody that came here and and brought awareness to that. As a hunter, I am very into firearm safety. That's why I brought a proclamation or a resolution four years ago that didn't pass. But I I just want to let folks know that I take firearm safety very seriously. And then I teach my child. I'm going to teach my child. He's too young to understand this now. But I was taught, and I'm going to teach my child that if you see a gun, don't touch it until an adult. And I welcome anybody else to use that philosophy. I also wanted to thank the staff with the Parks Parks Department, the Police Department, Code Compliance Department, all the city staff. Thank you so much for all the work that you do for helping clean up all these encampments. I help with the Reserve Street cleanup occasionally, and it is it's it's a daunting task. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys do. And then also next week, on Monday, we are not meeting because of Memorial Day. And I just wanted to let everyone know that Memorial Day is a very precious holiday for for a lot of American folks. And there's a quote that I wanted to share from Harry S. Truman that says, quote, "Our debt to the heroic men and valiant women in the service of our country can never be repaid. They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices." So thank you, everyone who has family that family or friends that have risked their lives and paid the ultimate sacrifice to make us safe in America. So thank you all.
Ms. Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate those comments. Ms. Basika, I also wanted to thank the Moms Against Guns Group, or Moms Demand Action Group, I guess it was. Really appreciate them coming in. And as a parent, whose youngest daughter is about to finish high school, it feels like there's a little bit of, you know, that after she's been locked down so many times in high school. I know that does not end end her risk of gun violence in this country. But it there is a weird sense of calm of her getting through high school. And I that bugs me that I feel that way. The positive note I was going to say tonight is I really hope that if anyone has a chance to join us in the Climate Conservation and Parks Meeting on Wednesday, that we will have some updates from our climate team that I think will be really interesting. And just to add on, because this is this is an issue that I I think that all of us have been hearing so much about this week, and I appreciate everyone's comments, the mayor's comments in particular. I think he he outlined what we are doing around it. But I myself have been in multiple meetings about the homelessness issue in the city. I I know that the mayor has been in way more than that, and the Parks Department and the Compliance Department. We are really trying to be innovative about what are what we can do under the current constraints and what we can compassionately do and what makes our parks available for our camps this summer and for people to use them that have been paying for them all these years. I understand that this is a multifaceted issue. It does require some humanity, and it also requires some enforcement, and it also requires some resources. About two years ago, I heard, I think it was, I'm guessing it was on NPR because I listen to NPR a lot. But on NPR, I was listening to someone from the National Homelessness Coalition interviewed, and they were suggesting that they anticipated a 70% rise in homelessness nationally in the forthcoming years. So while my colleagues some say it's us our failure to respond, I also think that this is a national issue of a crisis level that many, if not most, cities are dealing with. I I appreciate the conversations we're having around it. It is not just the emails. It is not just the phone calls that we are getting. I told a couple of colleagues earlier, my daughter had her wisdom teeth taken out earlier this year. And before they put her under, I was talking to her oral surgeon and all the nurses in the office about it. So, I mean, this is my friends are calling me. Anyone that knows that I'm on council, I'm talking to about a public function. So we are so acutely aware of this. I I don't think, honestly, other than being on the Health Board during COVID, that there has been one single issue that I've talked about so much in my four years on council. It is an everyday thing, and I I appreciate that we are all at the table trying to solve this. And please know that we at the city are doing everything we can to be creative and making this work for our community and our broader community.
Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. I don't think I have a whole lot more to say than what my colleagues have said, and I agree with with all of that. I I do want to clarify that I believe my job on council is to find responsible solutions to very challenging problems. And the reason I voted to not continue to have the authorized camping site is not because I didn't want to provide a safe. It's not because I didn't want to provide a place for people to go to. It's that at that time, we didn't we did not have the resources to provide a safe environment for both the campers or our staff. So I I take a little bit of issue with my colleagues saying that we we are responsible for the problem that we have at hand. Because I think that in that moment, we made a decision to to provide a place that would provide safety for both the campers and our staff. I also want to say that I do think that this is an emergency, and we need to be continue to do whatever we can to find reasonable and humane solutions to this problem. I represent Ward 2, and I get an incredible amount of calls from people who live in the West Side regarding this issue. So I hear you. I'm working my best to help find those solutions. Although I have to say, I have this one constituent who said to me that the the situation right now is not such that we need to be focusing on a solution, but rather managing a really challenging issue. And I I agree with that. I also want to say that on the form, it says that if you are feeling threatened or if it's a public health and safety issue, please do call the police. That is a number that you can call. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo a lot of what my colleagues have already said. A couple of things. Not a lot of people know that I'm dual citizen from Australia. I moved here six years ago with two teenagers who had never done a active shooter drill before, who'd never been through a lockdown before. And for children who don't grow up in this type of environment, it is really shocking and confronting. And as it turns out, my younger daughter moved back to Australia to finish high school because she was too scared to come to school in America. And that broke my heart because we can't provide a safe place for our children in schools. I think it's it's a tragedy that we have a whole generation of children who are growing up knowing that they need to be ready to get shot. And I think that that's something that we never we should never forget and that is completely unacceptable. I miss my daughter every day, and she is at a school where they never had a lockdown. They don't worry about getting shot. They don't walk through metal detectors. And I think that's how every child should be able to grow up. And I and I'm lucky that my daughter had an option to go someplace else where she felt safe. As far as dealing with houselessness goes, I echo my colleagues. We hear you. Like Mirta, I'm getting lots of phone calls and emails about people who are worried about what they're seeing. I guess one thing I'd like to ask constituents is to think, while this is a really tough situation, to think and ask themselves if they're truly having a safety issue or if they're actually having an experience where they're seeing something that is upsetting to them. We're having a lot of constituents call us because they're seeing things that they don't like seeing, but that are not safety-related issues. And given all of the barriers that we've talked about that we that prevent us from kind of addressing this from a really wholly humanitarian perspective, I'd like to ask people to to check in with themselves and see if they're actually dealing with the safety issue. And if they are, please call 911. If it's something you're seeing that you don't like seeing, that's not a safety issue. And it's where we're at right now. We are living with people who are living on the streets. They're very visible. They have tents set up in places that we regularly go to, and that's our new normal for a variety of reasons. We're trying to solve a national issue at the local level. And so I would ask constituents to please think about whether or not they're truly having a safety issue. And if they aren't, please call 911. But we are we're trying to figure out solutions for this problem. I do think that we missed some opportunities in our last budget cycle to address this. We knew it was coming, and and now we're scrambling. But we're all working hard. I know for a fact that everybody on city council wants to see a really humanitarian resolution to this and that we're doing the best we can with with the options that are available. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
That was really well said, Ms. Jordan. Thanks for your comments. And there's a lot in our world that is hard right now in American culture. And our gun culture, I think, is is incredibly troubling. And then I do agree, this is an emergency nationwide in terms of our homeless situation. We have been watching this come for the last few years as the pandemic hit and escalated our housing prices and impacted people's ability to earn. And frankly, with our federal dollars that came in, we were able to have interventions for the last few years, but those federal dollars are evaporating now. They're they're gone. And we're back to an incredibly challenging budget situation to figure out how to stretch our dollars as best as possible to have the most impact. And this issue was building prior to the pandemic. The federal dollars helped us cover those budget gaps. But now we're we're in a really challenging place. So I just wanted to say I I disagree with my colleague, Mr. Carlino, that we had all these opportunities and voted things down. We had a lot of discussions last fall on the ACS. And by the time we spent three or four committee meetings on it, there were no great ideas that were floated on the floor to keep it alive, to to make it work really well. Our nonprofit partners would not run it because of the way it was set up. We could not keep people hired to run it. That is not a safe situation. So we had to make the logical decision. And we have been working hard to make sure that we have the mobile support team as an ongoing program and finding different sources of funding for that. So I would just want to say that also. We are going to keep working on this, but we we are in a new era, I think, in America and in Montana and in Missoula. And we have a far more visible homeless population now. And as well, we should all note, the camping underneath the Reserve Street Bridge no longer is allowed, and folks are not allowed back in there. So we are seeing folks before they were out of sight. It's a tough summer we're having. My focus, I've been saying this for months, has been on making sure and doing what we can to make sure that we have dollars for the emergency winter shelter. Because when folks are outside during the winter camping, they can die from exposure. We are seeing people right now this summer. And and I agree with the comments made around the horseshoe tonight. It's a change. We are not used to seeing people. But summer camping is very different from winter camping. It's a life or death situation in the winter. So that that's that's the first priority to try and figure out with this budget this summer. And then we'll go from there. Trying to find creative solutions is great. And I think we look to all of our sister cities across America and the Intermountain West to see what they're doing to come up with good ideas. Mr. Carlino, you have a referral that you want to get on the floor to discuss ideas for urban camping. I appreciate that. But I think some work needs to go into it first to come up with some ideas and have a proposal instead of just throwing it out there. Because we have limited staff time and limited staff capacity. So this Wednesday, we're hearing a lot on urban camping. We're going to see what those steps forwards are. And that has been quite a few weeks of work in the administration to get that to the point that we're going to hear it this this Wednesday. So I don't like the that I'm blocking you, but I think you need to have your referral prepped and ready. It's a difference there. Anyway, that I think that concludes my comments. It's this is a tough topic, and Missoula is in a tough place. But I can tell you, there are a lot of other cities that are going through this right now. I know that Billings has an incredibly challenging situation in front of it. Beute, Bozeman, this is not unique to Missoula. So we're going to do the best we can to try and get this get this moving forward.
Ms. Farmer.
Yeah, thanks. I would agree with a lot of what's been said tonight and just repeat my thanks to the different departments that are dealing with this urban camping situation, the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Compliance, and, you know, especially the Parks Department. Like we said, a lot of those folks were hired to run camps and take care of our parks, not clean up certain areas. And I know that they are feeling frustrated and morale can be low. But I just want them to hear us say how much we do appreciate them. And we are going to find some solutions. But I would just also ask our community to remember that their frustration is pointing in the wrong direction if it's at a Parks Department staff member or a police officer or a fire department firefighter. We all want the right thing, and we all want the right solution. So I just really encourage everyone to to work together and and try not to take your frustrations and out on the wrong place.
Thanks, Ms. West.
I also really want to thank the staff that's doing the on-the-ground frontline work in our public right of ways. I also um really want to thank the staff that's doing the on-the-ground frontline work um in our public right of ways and our parks. I think um unless you happen to drive by right after something's been cleaned up, um, people move back in and it's not, their work um isn't really visible um or appreciated. Um, and it's really hard, harder than um probably fielding phone calls. So um, I also want to take a soft topic a little bit. Um, if uh, I just want to remind parents that we are in the last two and a half weeks of school. And um, I know many of us are juggling an incredible amount of after school and evening and end of the school year activities and just uh hang in there. We're almost done.
Thank you. And we have uh no additional uh miscellaneous communications tonight. And without any further agenda items, we will be adjourned. Thank you all for your service.